All right, it is six o'clock and I would like to call the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, West Melbourne City Council meeting to order. Please stand with me for the pledge in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the city council. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any other issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker card, which are located near the glass doors, and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all of your comments to the city council rather than to individual members. Please ask, please direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. All are present? We have no one missing? All right. Megan, our first item is presentations and proclamations in the youth, I'm sorry, Youth Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I had said at, I think maybe two meetings ago, we have appointed two individuals to this board, and in the audience, I just saw her come in, we have another applicant that would like to be considered for this board. I'm assuming she'll come up and tell you about herself, but if you saw her resume, it's very impressive. I could have used an algebra teacher when I was in high school, algebra tutor, but I did not have one. I did not have one. But she has a lot of really amazing experience, Health First volunteer. She worked on a production staff. I mean, she's, she's definitely has some amazing qualifications. And she would also like to be considered. So that would bring our total to three members to this board. And we've been getting some other applicants in, but they came in after this deadline, so. She's in the audience. If you would like to call up Megana, I think I'm pronouncing that right, but I'm sure she'll correct me if I'm wrong.
Hello, everyone. I'm Megana, Megana Geddon. Nice to meet you. I'm interesting on, interested on serving this, on this board because I would like to, like to make a lasting impact for this wonderful community. I do have experience as an algebra tutor. I support women's mental health. I am the vice chair of Women's Mental Health Community at Minds Without Borders. So I work in multiple nonprofit organizations, obviously Health First as well. I have a lot of leadership skills and I aim to be an electrical engineer, joining the Air Force. So I hope to make that field, you know, a successful part of my journey. And I think joining this board would really help me commit to my excellence and my ambitions.
Thank you and welcome. Are there any questions here for Megana? Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I did look through your resume, your letters from both your, I think it was your journal, not journal, was it your journalism teacher? Okay, so your journalism teacher as well as from your mom, who I believe is an engineer as well, correct?
Yes.
Awesome job. In particular, you know, looking at West Melbourne, which is where you live, what would you see as kind of your biggest asset or perspective that you would bring to the board?
Yeah, so I've definitely seen a lot of other communities having music festivals and youth, youth cultural events. So I would like to see that in this community as well, really bringing that equal opportunity in. And a lot of sports tournaments, because I know sports is a big thing in Brevard County. I know we're number one up there, but I would love to see students have, have a place in this community.
All right, thank you.
If there are other questions, I don't mind waiting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton?
Hi, I'm glad, glad you're participating in this. It is going to take some time. You seem to be very busy. How's your, how's your time going to be structured around this new board? I'm sure it's going to take a little bit of effort to get everything together and work with the advisor, Ms. Adams, who's going to help structure you guys in the beginning. So how's your time going to be structured? And how are you going to manage that?
Yeah, so next month and a little bit of November is going to be a little bit busy for me because I have college application deadlines coming up, so I have to write some essays for those colleges. But after that, I am completely free. I'll be rid of that hassle.
Good. Where are you planning on going?
I'm looking towards UF or Georgia Tech, but.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
I think you'd be a great member on this board, by the way.
All right, thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. Bentley?
I was just curious, you said University of Florida. Have you thought about the Air Force Academy? I think you said you're joining the Air Force.
Yeah, so I have, I have a little bit of a problem with that. I can't join the academy just because of my, like, legal citizenship status.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
There are no questions. I'd like to make a motion to appoint her to our Youth Advisory Board. And then I have an additional follow-up question for the city attorney.
All right, let me get a second, Mr. Frampton? All right, and your question for the attorney?
If, assuming the motion goes through and we have three applicants to the board, I know that Ms. Alexander said we have a couple more students who are interested. I think, I think she told me on the phone today it was three more, so hopefully at that point that gives us a full group. How are we looking at then moving forward, at scheduling this, to make sure we're moving the ball forward?
Yeah, I mean, once you have a sufficient number of members to form a quorum, you could work with the city manager or his assistant to, and when I say assistant, I mean Tammy, to get on everybody's calendar and see what day works well and, and start moving forward with that, yeah. So I think from the sounds of it, after the next meeting, we'll be able to do that.
Okay, so we'd have to wait for that minimum of four number?
It would be a good idea too, so that you have enough people to form a quorum and so that you can decide if, if the people that are going to be on the agenda next week are all going to be added, so that you can work with them to find a good time to have the meeting. I, I think it'd be a good idea to wait for one more meeting.
Thank you, just wanted to check on that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor for Ms. Adams, a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor of appointing Megana Geddon to the Youth, to the Youth Advisory Board, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you and welcome. All right, next item. There are no modifications to the agenda. We'll open the public hearings, and this is the proposal fiscal year 2025-26, millage rate and budget. Mr. Rhodey?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the city council. It is my great pleasure to come to the final meeting of the 2025-26 budget. We started this process in April of twenty, of twenty-four. We are now in a position to move the budget forward and take final action this evening. I gave a presentation last council meeting outlining some of the highlights of the council, but traditionally, we have not done a presentation for the final meeting here. Happy to answer any questions or comments. We, it goes without saying, I'm just so proud of the staff. Finance Director Candace Blake, Sonia Banks, Tom Bradford, all the department heads, John Carey, our city clerk, Megan Alexander, I think everybody, you don't put $103 million budget together by yourself. This is a monumental lift. I am very proud of the budget itself. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but the city manager is recommending we take some action this evening on both the budget and the rate.
The city manager is?
I am recommending we do, we do want to do something this evening on this.
I think you, are there any speaker cards on this public hearing, Megan, on this item? All right, thank you. All right, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and approve by separate motions, and we're to direct the city clerk to publicly announce separate motion, all right?
Thank you, Mayor. The taxing authority is the city of West Melbourne. The rollback rate is 1.8151. The percentage change from the rollback rate is zero percent. The millage rate to be levied is 1.8151.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, one is I do have a question, but first I'll make a motion and wait for a second. I'm sorry, I'd make a motion, we adopt resolution number 2025-21, approving the tentative 2025-2026 budget.
Do you want to do 20 first?
Do what?
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty first. And then we need to do two separate ones. I didn't know if it mattered which order we do it in, one and two.
It says by separate motion.
It does not, but I would recommend doing 20 first.
Okay, so I'll do 20.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr., all right, Mr. Frampton, second? I'm sorry, but. Mr. Frampton, all right, we have a second, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Bentley and a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries seven zero. All right, next item, adopt the resolution number 2025-21, approving the tentative budget rate 2025-26. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I'd make a motion, and I still have a question. That we approve resolution number 2025-21.
All right, Mr. Frampton? All right, Mr. Bentley, your question?
Yes, simple one. Mr. Rhodey, what would our normal budget be? I know we have a lot of grants and other monies, like water plant stuff that we're doing this year, so 103 is not normal for the city of West Melbourne. Is it something like half that?
It is not. So we've ranged, we've gotten as high as 59 million in the past. Typical budget in the forties, so figure 45 million would be a, a standard budget. But you, you throw the water plant, and then you throw several of our eight million dollar projects that we have going right now, grant funded, into the mix, and that's how you get $103 million budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, Mr. Frampton, I'm sorry, I thought it was still for your second, yes.
No, I was wanting to comment too, so. Just wanted to congratulate you and your staff, Mr. Rhodey, on doing a fantastic job on this budget and, and along the whole way, it's been a pleasure coming up with this budget. So that, that's all I wanted to say. I wanted to congratulate you and your staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If that's a motion, I would second that one.
The motion that's on the floor, it is not though. So the motion on the floor, we have a motion by Mr. Bentley and a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say nay. Motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you. We will close the public hearing and we'll open the public forum. Are there speaker cards?
Thank you.
All right, our first speaker card is Betty Goble. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Betty Goble, 252 East Haven Drive, West Melbourne.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a question about all the apartments coming in, questions regarding traffic.
Oops, sorry.
Am I over?
Time's up. Just kidding.
Regarding traffic, regarding infrastructure, what the contractors have in that relationship, if anything. It seems like there's three major ones fairly close, and I was just wondering, what's up?
Would you like to handle this, Mr. Rhodey?
I would be happy to try and answer. So you're talking new apartments or the existing apartments?
Well, they're already there. You know, you blink, and there's another group of, you know, six big buildings of apartments. So I'm wondering what the, in the construction, if they had to agree to something like traffic light, moving the road to make a turn lane, anything about the plumbing, if they all flush their toilet at the same time.
So, so a couple of different questions. I will try my best to answer them one at a time. If I forget one, please, please ask again. So we'll, we'll start with water and sewer. So every project that comes into the city of West Melbourne undergoes a water and sewer capacity test to see if we have enough capacity to be able to provide services for those individuals. So that, we, we don't allow anybody in if we can't service them. And so our facilities are established to be able to take that growth. We, we estimate our growth is going to be somewhere around 40,000 people when we're all done, and we're just above 30,000 now, so we have capacity. We've planned for the growth of those people to come here. And so the utilities, a lot of times they're private on the piece of property that's developed, and then it goes to a lift station, in which case then it becomes public in the sense that then we manage it as it gets to the sewer plant and gets treated, or if it's water and the water mains get to that property, and then it goes private once it goes onto those facilities. So we, we have adequate infrastructure for the utilities. The traffic, if it's a West Melbourne road or a county road, they do pay traffic impact fee as part of the development, and that goes into a, a pool of money that either the city or the county is able to spend to improve infrastructure in that area. Alongside with that, every project that gets developed in West Melbourne has to go through a traffic analysis. And a lot of times those, what we call turn pockets, those areas where you get out of the main lane into a side lane to be able to turn in, or a left-hand turn, those pockets are evaluated. If they don't exist, they have to install them. If they exist, but they're not long enough, they have to make them longer to be able to hold the capacity of those projects. Several signalized intersections have been gone along with some of our recent projects. So Hollywood Imagine Way, the road that intersects Minton between Palm Bay and Henry, that's escaping me, closer to Palm Bay Road.
Norfolk?
Not Imagine, oh gosh. Healed, Healed Road, there's a signalized intersection that's being improved there. Good, good call. Always rely on the chief. Oh, was that, was that, was that Mark? That was Mark. Thank you, Director Pegrill. You know, those, but, but now that light has been expanded, it's not done yet, but it, that intersection got expanded to be able to account for the wider turn, ingress, egress, and those turn pockets that are associated with that. So. And that's a county road. That's, you know, Minton is not ours, but that's a county road, and that's part of that, was part of their agreement to come into the city, was that they, they met the county requirements for the traffic impact.
Who pays for that traffic light?
So they, the developer paid for that signalized intersection, as did the developer pay for the Imagine Way one. Now, that was a city project, but we used the developer's money to put that signalized intersection at Imagine Way and Norfolk.
It seems like the little one just after you go over the expressway and there's those brand-new apartment buildings, one way in, one way out. That's what it looks like from the driving-by before you get to whatever that turn was, Innovation Way or before Palm Bay Road.
Carriage gate, by carriage gate?
One across from Carriage Gate.
Yes, across from Carriage Gate. That used to be a single-family home, and now it's, you know, a quadruple condo.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and they're accessing through prom, they're, they're accessing through the shared entrance on Promise and then on Minton. They did all that improvement for the turn pocket on Minton.
There's another way?
The, the main entrance is on Norfolk.
The main entrance is on Norfolk, which was planned when the Promise facility was built. They share that main entrance.
It really doesn't look good the way, you know, it appears, that they have no way out.
Well, they have two, they have two, they have two ingresses and two egresses, on Norfolk and on Minton.
Two, on each one?
Yep.
And I'll have to drive again.
Well.
One way in and out on.
I, yes, I guess we're, we're, we're saying the same thing with different phraseology, yes. You, you can. You can ingress and egress at both those locations, at two, two locations for that project.
That's true. Okay. Are they paying enough when you say that the?
They never pay enough, if you ask me.
Well, ask and, I don't think they pay enough for what they're doing.
They, they, I, I say that jokingly. I do agree with you. I, in a perfect world, we would have them pay a lot more money, but those fees are set and established. And there are restrictions on what we can charge them for developing in our community. So we can't just make up a number and say, we think you should pay us $5 million to come here. We have to base that on the traffic impact that they have to ingress and egress their property. That's what the state statutes tell us we have.
So it's state and not West Melbourne that says?
The fees are ours, but the state establishes how we can charge those, and we, and the state is very clear about property rights, and that we cannot just make up a number and charge $10 million and.
We should raise that number. It seems like it's time.
It's state.
Yeah, we have representatives. We need to contact them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Goble.
Mr. Rhodey, what about the recreation fees?
So we, we also have some other fees, so recreation fees is another one that we charge, and so that goes into the city, that comes to the city, and then we spend that on building additional parks or making improvements to the existing parks. They also have a tree mitigation bank that we have, so any trees that they tear down, they have to pay for and put into our tree mitigation bank, so that now that we're coming to be fully developed, we can start planting trees in areas to bring back some of that urban forestry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goble. Mr. Beebe, Ed Beebe? I'm going to try this again. We'll see if it works.
Good to see some of you haven't been here in a few years. I have a few troubles, but I know a couple of you people on board.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beebe, state your name and address for the record.
242 East Haven Drive, West Melbourne, Florida. I'm here to, I'm going to say some things, and then you can make comments on whatever I say, because I've talked to the town mayor about the oil buildup on our roads over there. They've been there for seven, eight months now, and they're no better than they were six months ago. They have tried to do somewhat, but it's not done yet, so I, I've talked to the town mayor three or four times about that problem. Drainage on our roads, I complained about this years ago when I was here all the time. Anyways, the, to clean out our drainage, or the drain holes that go from our roads to the canals, they have not been, they used to do them every year, and they have not been done lately, that I know of, in the last two or three years, since they put all new ones in four or five years ago, which I was responsible for that too, because we were flooding out all the time. I used to come here a lot. You don't, none of you know me, I don't think, no? I just know two.
I do.
Good to meet you all again. And the infrastructure, she brought that up. But the drainage problems, I would like that taken care of again, so we don't run into that problem. We haven't had the seven or eight inches of rain that we had six, seven years ago that flooded us all out, including me. Updating the roads and stuff, I don't know what's going on. They say Brevard County's in charge of the roads. But you must have something to say about it, because this road over here on 192, I have electric wheelchair that I ride up and down the road to go to Home Depot or Target. And you can't even get on the sidewalk over there. They want you to use the road passage that they have, that they widened, which thinning the road ways as far as they go down. And I pointed that out to some people in my neighborhood and, and around here, and they say, yeah, they did. What'd they do that for? I thought they were going to make three lanes. Well, they never did. They said that five, six years ago, there was going to be three lanes on 192, which never happened. So I don't know what that story's about. And this is a request from one of my other neighbors. She couldn't make it, I guess. Underground electric wires. I know you guys can't really produce that, but maybe you can put in a word for that. They are doing it a lot in Palm Bay and all the new places. They're all getting underground, you know, electrical wiring and stuff, which is, saves you on losing power a lot. So I don't know what we can do about that, but I did want to bring it up to represent my neighbor that couldn't make it here tonight. So anyways, that's my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe. Perfect timing. You landed right on the, on the.
What road were we talking about, Mayor?
He was talking about 192 and the lanes, the lane. And the drainage, drainage, drainage in East Haven, over by East Haven, in that whole subdivision, they flooded terribly. Absolutely terribly, yes. So you definitely have a point for your drainage. And we have worked in the general area over there. We did put in new plumbing over there. This is going to beep on me any minute here.
Beeping on me?
Okay, we should be done. Mr. Rhodey, did you want to address that at all? The oil spill on Haven Drive on the roads, I did take that up with Waste Management. The hydraulic, when the hydraulics broke, and they left that terrible mess there. I did take that up with them at the meeting. I did take that up with them at the meeting they had with them, and I don't see that anything's been done about that. So, when you meet with Waste Management again?
Especially where they stopped and dropped their load or picked up their load, just dumped a whole bunch of grease there. The road itself has, they have cleaned that up. They've had people over there doing that, but not the big clumps.
Ms. Adams, did you want to respond to Mr. Beebe?
I just had a quick clarification question. Is there still oil from Waste Management on that road now?
Certainly, on East Haven Drive, all the way around and down and round.
Okay.
You drive over there or drive in a wheelchair over there, like I do, and you got to watch it, you get stuck. Not stuck, but you can peel out.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, it's a mess.
But Waste Management is aware of the problem? And they haven't fixed it in how long?
They've not fixed it in months. I showed them the photos of it. I also told them about the people that walk their dogs. Their dogs walk through it, and they walk through the house. It's the hydraulics, when the hydraulics break on the Waste Management trucks, to the point where they have to be towed away. So, yes, they're well away. Oh, yeah, that's our, that's ours.
Well, I mean, there's seven of us. I think all seven of us should be calling tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe.
Well, I'm sure with how many calls the city tries to make to Waste Management, I'm sure the city has been trying to deal with it, but since it's been this long.
I am happy to reach out to our contact to Waste Management and get an update for you. That is not something that I have been aware of, and the drainage, we did new drainage on East Haven?
I'm talking about the drainage that goes from the roads to the drain canal. They did, they did do the canals this year. They did the one on, over there, and the one over there. But the roads, they put in all-new drainage. I forget what you call it, going under everybody's house to drain the water into the canal. They put in all-new pipes about six, six years ago.
Okay.
But they haven't come back. They did at first, but they haven't been back in a couple of years to clean them out. They should clean them out every year, because of all the leaves and pollen and whatever gets in there, garbage, you name it. That's a mess. It needs to be cleaned out every, they said they were doing it every year. That was years ago. Now, it hasn't been happening.
I'm happy to look, I'm just not familiar with it.
We're talking about the swales in front of the houses? Is that kind of what we're talking about?
I think you're talking about the catch basins?
Yes.
That then lead to the?
Yes.
Yep.
I used to bring a truck, pump it out, and pump them out, and make sure they're clean every, before hurricane season every year.
How did, how did we do a couple of weeks ago? We got 7.1 inches of rain. Did it, how did it do for that rain?
You can get it all in one night, though. We got five inches there, because I got other people with meters and stuff, and they tell me how much rain we get, so.
Yeah, we.
You can get seven, but you don't.
Yeah, that was, that was two or three weeks ago. We got 7.1 at City Hall.
At City Hall? Must have been a hell of a downfall there.
It was.
Yes, it was.
It was. That it was. But I am happy to look into those, you know, we're not looking, you know, we, we're not looking for anybody to flood anymore than people are looking to flood.
And what about the 192, about the sidewalks? Them signs have been up for three months now to get, to go onto the sidewalks. They blocked them all off, so you can't get on the sidewalk, especially with an electric wheelchair that I do use.
Yeah.
They're still blocked off, three months.
I think I speak for everyone up here with the frustration of how long the 192 repaving project has been going on. Obviously, controlled and run by the state. We've put in numerous requests and had numerous conversations as to why they work three, four days in a row and get a whole bunch of area done, and then you don't see them for two weeks. You don't see anybody paving or doing any work. I have no idea why that happens, but I can put a call into them to try to get that project pushed. It's the same with the freeway. The freeway, they do, it seems like for a week or so, they work on the freeway, and they make good progress, and then you don't see anybody working on the freeway for a couple of weeks, so.
I figure with the new lights they got on 192 that can cross, they must have put them in for me, so I can get across there.
There you go, there you go.
Really, I don't need them. But anyways, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe. Thank you. The next speaker is Joan Connolly.
Well, hang on, just one second. I just want to state that you said that you would contact Waste Management. I think we need to get an answer from Waste Management, you know, and really get on their case about it. This has been way too long. And Andrea, how long you been over there, too many times? And they're obviously not doing it, so it's not getting to the right place. So, chew some heads.
You're not even sure that we, from the city, addressed it yet, right?
I think the mayor did, but I'm happy to.
Well, I absolutely did.
Yeah, I'm.
Not through his office, no, personally, face-to-face, so.
We will get on it.
When this happens, it's called GPT, Oil, I'm sorry, OPG, Oil, Petroleum and Grease. And so, when this happened, I happened to be in the area. I got a call from, from one of the, one of the residents that this was happening. I went out there, and the OPG tech was there, and he was putting the remedy on the road, and he said it takes three times for it to finally work. So, I went through, he showed me the whole process, how it works, and when they were going to be back. Well, according to the neighbors that continue to call me, they've never come back for the second or the third time. And this is still an awful mess. I've got photos of it, of the road. I mean, you can see just everything, and then it's where it stops to pick up the next group of carts, then there's a bigger splash, and then it goes on, and finally, the truck had to be towed. And this is last year, at least last year, that this has happened, and they still haven't cleaned it out. So, yes, well, this is definitely an issue, and I'm very glad that you came and brought that here, so now everybody hears it, and we know that this is something that we have to take care of. Thank you, Mr. Beebe, again. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms. Connolly, Joan Connolly? Thank you.
Aw, thank you. Joan Connolly, 551 Jennifer Circle, West Melbourne. Okay. First, thank you again, allowing me to speak on behalf of the Hollywood Estates community. Again, I'm here about the front entrance that is owned by the city of West Melbourne. As I've stated numerous times, the majority, 245 petition signers, have requested that you resume maintenance of the entrance. We, as a community, have removed all the trees out of the retention pond and cleared out the median. We only ask that you honor the agreement signed by the HOA president in 2011. Since your last council meeting, the voluntary HO board resigned on Tuesday, September 9th. A new board is now in place. I am in receipt of the updated lease agreement you sent to the past president, Dave Stolby. The updated lease agreement removes all responsibility of maintenance by the city and places a burden on the community. The document does not benefit Hollywood Estates. It was never been my intention to be part of this community's voluntary HOA. However, I felt I had no other option. I've taken on the responsibility of HOA president, and I am the registered agent for the association. The updated lease agreement, I cannot in good conscience sign. I hope that the city manager will reconsider what you proposed and come up with a better solution for our community. I don't know what else to do. I mean, I don't want to do legal action. I don't want to do any of that. It's just, it's in writing. I mean, couldn't we come up with something that, you know, any future, nobody can do anything to the community and leave it the way it is? I mean, you technically don't have anything in writing for us to sign this. I mean, you had the, I think the agent of record asked to sign for the document you sent recently, but it was sent to the president. So, I figure I'm covering all my bases, because right now, we're not comfortable signing it. So, I don't know what my options are.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Frampton, your light is on.
Now that you're the president of the HOA, have you called the manager's office to set a meeting with him to discuss that?
The call just happened. I've just gotten the document, so I haven't, I talked to him, let's see, when did I?
Can I suggest that you call and make a meeting with the manager, and if you guys can't resolve it, then come back to council and let us know?
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
That work for you, Mr. Rhodey?
It sure does.
All right, thank you. Were there any other speaker cards? All right, we will close the public forum. Next item is the consent agenda. Mr. Frampton, Ms. McGuire? I'm sorry, Mr. Frampton, is your light still on, or did you put it on again?
I was going to make a motion. You can feel free to make a motion.
Ms. McGuire?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton? All right, thank you very much. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven, zero. All right, thank you. Next item, action items. This is Landscape Maintenance US 192, meeting in sidewalk. Mr. Picarello, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Our landscape contract for 192 and Minton Road is up at the end of this month. So, back in August, we put out a bid package for the continuation of, of maintenance of the two roadways. As you can see, we got six responses of various figures from the different vendors that all bid for it. They, so as you can see, we go from $308,000 to $34,000 from the bidders. So, with that, it's my recommendation that we go with the lowest bidder for the $34,560, and that would go to Second Mile MCLCC in that amount. Our budgeted amount for the year for that is $34,500. That's what we have budgeted for this year. The contractor that has it now, his total amount is $29,000 that we're paying him, so it's about a $5,000 increase. Whether he went online, this individual, to find out what our budget was and knew that we budgeted $34,000 is a possibility, and that's where we stand with that. So, it's my recommendation that we have the city manager approve and sign this contract with Second Mile MCLCC for the maintenance of 192 and Minton Road.
Thank you, Mr. Picarello. Any questions for Mr. Picarello? I don't see any lights on. Ms. Volz?
No, I just want to make a motion, go ahead and approve that bid of $34,560.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton. All right, we have a motion to approve from Ms. Volz. We have a second for Mr. Frampton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Picarello.
Thank you.
All right, next item is B, annual review of city manager's performance. Jennifer Corren.
And good evening, Mayor and city council members. So, our city manager, Mr. Tim Rhodey, was appointed as the city of West Melbourne city manager effective on September 1 of 2022. As required by his employment agreement, the city council is tasked with evaluating his performance approximately one year after his appointment, and then annually thereafter. I did send out evaluations, and I received them from all council members, and compiled them into a summary document, which is attached to this staff report. Mr. Rhodey's overall score averaged a 4.45 out of 5, which was an increase from last year. His score last year was a 4.24, and that generally exceeds performance standards. And I am requesting a motion to accept the summary document as attached, and thereafter, the city council may discuss Mr. Rhodey's performance.
Ms. Volz?
Oh, I forgot to have my lineup, but I will say something. When I, when I got the paperwork on this, I had just had my surgery on my thumb, and I could not write one single thing, but I filled out the numbers for you, and that was all that I could do. But I just wanted to say that I think you're doing an awesome job listening to the council, working for the council, and, and just making sure that the budget is, we've lowered the budget every year. You're doing a fantastic job in all the stuff that I can see that I'm looking for, so.
Thank you, Ms. Volz. Ms. McGuire?
With that, I will make a motion that we accept the annual review of the city manager's performance.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
I will second that, just with a note that Mr. Rhodey's numerical scores are above average in his categories. So, congratulations, sir. Thank you for your work on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. McGuire, a second from Ms. Adams. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven, zero. So, it is usually at this time that we talk about raises and those things that come along here. Mr. Rhodey, looks like you want to say something. Ms. Volz, your light is still on?
So, so, two items. The first item is, had some discussion with council members that's kind of going a little bit back to something that we talked about earlier in the year relative to vacation time and working while on vacation time. And so, I would like to ask that one of our future workshop items, we, we circle back with that and try to come up with some parameters and some, some guidelines for that item. The employees are covered under the handbook, and while the council only has two employees, the, you know, city manager and the city attorney, those employees are a little bit different based on their role, and so I think hard to cover that in a handbook versus, you know, we have, obviously, our agreements with the council, and so like to discuss that at a future workshop and see if we can get a resolution for that. The second thing is, this council has been just a blessing to work for. Just an amazing team that makes it a blessing to work here. And I think everybody is firing on all cylinders. The only way you successfully have $103 million budget in a community that's used to a $45 million budget is for everybody going in the same direction. And so, that's, that's just been a blessing for me. I appreciate that. In years past, this council has taken care of me based on comparable wages, and I have been grateful for that. This year, the average West Melbourne general employee will receive somewhere around 3.5%. I say somewhat because we do performance reviews, and so some employees will make a little bit more than 3.5, and some, that means some will make a little bit less than 3.5. And so, this year, I am graciously asking for a 3.5% pay raise from the city council.
Thank you. Any, Ms. Volz?
Yes, I will. Do we need to make a motion on that, then? I mean, we do? Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and then give you a 3.5% raise for all the work that you've done.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Second. Second, and then I have a comment.
All right, Mr. Comment, Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I did look at the compensation package for Mr. Rhodey and, you know, see that he's asking for three and a half, and that's the, the average, if we look at it that way. Normally, when you have an employee that scores as high as he did, you would get above average. But at the same time, I looked at your comp ratio, and you're pretty high in your band. So, to me, it made sense to, to go with a 3.5%, being that he's high in the band, so he's highly compensated, even at his current level, which I think is appropriate, but facts are facts there. But he did have a high score, so even with a high score, I still think you should get an average review. So, thank you, Mayor. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton?
How's the workshop impact the percentage raise? Is that, is it two separate things?
I think it's two separate things, just, you know, not asking for any additional holiday or any additional benefit, just looking to clarify.
And then the contract can fall in line with, after the workshop, is that right?
We work at the pleasure of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we just did the performance review for the TPO director as well, and she as well did not want a raise, she just wanted the 5% that the rest of staff was getting. So that's what we went through, but she was not opposed to a bonus. We haven't discussed that at all. Anyone like to discuss? I said, we just did this with the transportation planning organization director. We did the same thing. We did the, we did it. She scored very highly. She did not want a raise anything more than what the rest of staff was getting, but she was not opposed to a bonus. So I'm asking if the council would like to discuss a bonus.
Can I jump in here real quick? The TPO isn't subject to some of the same laws that we are.
So we can't give them a bonus?
No.
I should have checked with you first. I didn't realize that.
That's okay. There's a statute, it's 215.425, that prohibits, generally prohibits bonuses for city employees.
All right, thank you. I should have checked with you first. I didn't realize we could not do that. All right, then, in that case, we do.
Don't break the law.
No, we don't want to do that. That would look bad on your review. So we have a motion from Ms. Volz, and we have a second from Mr. Bentley to give Mr. Rhodey a 3.5 raise in his salary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, congratulations. That was a great review.
The bonus is an attaboy.
There we are, thank you. All right, thank you. Next is council reports. Alexis McGuire?
No report.
Stephen Frampton?
As far as the workshop goes, we have any idea on the scheduling of that?
We will have to get a date, as has happened in the past.
Going to wrangle some cats?
I ask on behalf of our city clerk to please respond to dates when they are proposed. Now, last time, we had a little bit harder time because we had the architect and the builder schedule, and so there was more moving. You know, this is just the council's schedule, so we just ask that you respond to our city clerk when she sends those emails.
Thank you, no other reports.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Just a couple of things to highlight. I know Sunflower House had their Patriot Day memorial recognition event, which was moved to the community park in the Field of Dreams. Based on staff feedback and from council members that were there, I've heard that that move accommodated more people, so that is something I think Sunflower House may be exploring in the future in terms of continuing to keep that event there. I was wondering, because I may have missed it in previous weekly roundups that go out on the Fridays, but finding some way, because I think in general, since West Melbourne doesn't do a separate event for that recognition, if we could find a way next year to let residents know probably a month or two in advance and then just kind of encourage attendance at that event, I think that would be really great, especially since I went to a couple of different ones around Brevard County that day, and I think the ones that are more central and even the one that I saw at north end of Brevard just had really great attendance, and I'd like to see that here on our more south end of Brevard as well. A heads up for council, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so this is your friendly reminder that if you would like to wear pink for either of our two meetings, I would encourage you to do so. I know Mr. Bentley is really looking forward to it.
Throw away my pink shirt. For one time.
You're killing me, man.
I wore mine today.
There you go. We also have Heritage Day coming up next month, so just an encouragement there. If you know of organizations or nonprofits or local businesses that should be participating, the city put their vendor application on the website. And then I also had the question of date of next workshop, but I guess that is a work in progress. I know we've got holiday season coming, so that will just make scheduling a little bit more challenging, so maybe sooner rather than later we can get that scheduled.
And I strongly encourage you replying to it. It sometimes is difficult to get replies, and, you know, in all fairness, people's schedules are complicated, but it seems like the last couple lag, and then it gets hard, and then we have to find another date. So we would just appreciate everyone, when the city clerk puts those dates out, to just take a look, and if they work great, we can get something on the books. If they don't, we can find other dates.
Understood. The Space Coast League of Cities is trying to gather from all the city's feedback in terms of their legislative priorities, things that would benefit our city in terms of advocacy. So if you have any in particular that you feel strongly about, please share with Mr. Rhodey, because I'm going to be asking him to submit that list to our Space Coast League, who is then kind of accumulating them from all of the Brevard cities and then forwarding on to the Florida League for their advocacy efforts. In that same vein, the end of next week, we've got the first of three Legislative Policy Committee meetings for those that volunteered for those committees. So just a reminder that that is coming up and should be, I'd say, a lot of fun. It is fun, but it'll be a lot of work. It'll be an interesting session this year. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Ms. Volz?
Yes, I did go to the Sunflower House, well, the event that was over there, and it was nice. And I will say that those singers did an awesome job. Were they from Satellite Beach, Satellite Beach Choir or something? Oh, my gosh, they were just incredible. Yeah. And then I went to Julie Smith's funeral, went up there, and there was, there was a lot of people, and I did talk to his wife and saw people I haven't seen in a long time. So that was, that was nice, and I'm glad that I went, so.
Thank you, Ms. Volz. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two comments really for Mr. Rhodey, I think, so. First is, just to jump onto the bandwagon on the 192 paving. Hopefully, they can fix the intersection of 192 and Wickham Road. People stop there to go over those two bumps, and it takes you four lights to get through instead of two or three, because everybody's stopping because of those drop-offs for small cars. Yeah. So if they could just make it so that you could cross the intersection without having to stop every 10 feet to get across an intersection, that would be helpful. Secondly, I was expecting, to be honest, a quicker response from Waste Management on the discussion that you and I had with them. I've heard nothing since.
Luigi did reach out. He was hoping to have some numbers. He's got to take it all the way up the chain, and it's got to come all the way back down before he can present anything to the city.
And that's going to be?
He promised it this week.
Okay.
I pushed him the last two weeks, and...
And the more I thought about it, the more it really shouldn't cost very much at all, if any more. You know, when this is trash in my mind, they should be picking up anyway. We're just forcing them to do a better job of what they should be doing. I get their argument on the, it can impact other pickups, but I think that'd be okay, actually. I don't think, because then it would only be a one-day impact, because they would know the impact when they stopped and picked it up of, hey, we need another truck tomorrow because we didn't do something. And I don't think people are going to complain over it. I can almost guarantee you right now, they don't come out on the day they promise on their website. So.
They do not.
So I don't really think there's any impact in that, except that it's forcing them to do something they're not currently doing, but it's within the contract. So I'm almost to the point that I don't really think it should cost more. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Mr. Gaylord?
Nothing to report.
All right, and I will also not have a report so that we can get right to management reports.
Well, I have a question.
Except for Ms. Volz.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask. How, how much of Eber are we responsible for? Like from Dairy Road West?
So there, there is a stretch of Eber between, around Snickle that we do.
I don't know where that's at.
So Snickle is kind of near Dairy.
Okay.
But I believe at Hollywood, from Hollywood to Mitten on Eber is county.
Right, okay.
But I would have to double-check our maps to know where that.
Okay, because right near where there's a community, it's called Eber Cove, and right as the speed limit goes to 35, the road is like falling apart. It's like bumps. I mean, it's like you're going over gravel or something, and I don't know who's responsible for that, but I travel that way quite a bit.
If the road's bad, it's probably the county. But I will double-check our maps. If it's our road, we certainly need to take care of it. If it's the county, we'll reach out to the county. Is it, is it east?
It's on the north side of the road, west of Hollywood.
West of Hollywood. I...
No, no, I'm sorry. It's west of Dairy.
I would have to check our maps.
Okay.
To see, because we do have a part of that around that. Snickle is like kind of where, if you come out of the back way of Walmart on Palm Bay Road, that's, that's Snickle back there.
Well, I don't know, this is right, right by Eber Cove.
Okay.
So whatever that is over there, but the road, it's just one area, maybe 200 feet, maybe 100 feet, is pretty bad. Not that there's potholes or anything, but the road is like bad.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Volz. Management reports, Mr. Rhodey followed by Mr. Carey.
So continued effort on Heritage Days, coming together very well. Appreciate anybody using their social media influence, that's a phrase now. I know Deputy Mayor Bentley has a large social media influence, so if he could, if he could help get that out.
It's with his pink shirt.
Any help could, would be appreciated. We've done our parts. We've got some ads. We've got, reached out to the schools, where we've had a lot of our success with the schools getting those school-age kids to attend. And so again, promoting that family-friendly, very low-cost event could be a zero-cost event, because we do supply some food and plenty of activities at no cost, but we also do have some vendors and some food trucks for the people who want to spend some money. So otherwise, that is it for management reports for me.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly discuss and see if anybody had any questions about the subject that I emailed you all about last Wednesday, which was when the case came out in the first DCA that essentially legalized open carry throughout the state of Florida. The, I had mentioned in my email, but I'll remind you again, in the federal courts, as we had discussed with the situation with the curfews, the binding courts on us are the U.S. Supreme Court and the 11th Circuit, which is the circuit that covers Florida, Georgia, and a couple other states. In the state courts, it's the opposite. We're bound by all DCA decisions, whether it's in our DCA, which is the Fifth DCA, or another one. And the only exception to that is if there's two conflicting decisions in two DCAs, in which case we're bound to however the Fifth decides, and if the Fifth hasn't said either way, then we have to kind of try to figure it out until the Supreme Court resolves it. And that's one of the Supreme Court's role, roles is to resolve splits in the DCAs. In this case, there's no split. The First DCA is the only court to have ruled on this, and so the open carry is now the law in the state of Florida. It's on a constitutional basis. And so unless the Florida Supreme Court or a federal court with jurisdiction decides otherwise, that is the law right now. I was interested to figure out, as I was looking into this to prepare the email, that we were one of only four states in the country that didn't allow open carry, the others being California, New York, and Illinois. And I'm not sure how Florida got mixed into that group, but we were, and so now we are no longer part of that group, so we're the 47th state with open carry. There is, I would like to remind you, a complete preemption over local regulations of firearms in the state of Florida. The legislature has preempted that, and they've done so in a way that's above and beyond most preemptions by also making it clear in the law that if a local official tries to regulate firearms, they can be thrown out of office and also fined up to $5,000. So that's just kind of where we are. There's no action for you to take since we're preempted, but I did want to update you, since I sent you that letter yesterday, the Attorney General of Florida sent out a guidance memorandum to all law enforcement agencies, essentially stating that the Attorney General agrees with the decision and the constitutional basis for it, will not be challenging it to the Florida Supreme Court, and so the Attorney General views this as binding on statewide. And the Attorney General also went a little farther to say that the, that in his view, the decision doesn't prevent law enforcement to continue to police those who exhibit firearms in a rude, careless, angry, or threatening matter, or menace others in public, or prevent felons from possessing firearms. And he also noted that the decision doesn't implicate any of the other exceptions where you are allowed to prohibit firearms, you know, such as school zones and inside city council chambers, for example, and as well as private property. So private owners of businesses are allowed to prohibit from people from carrying within that business, and according to the Attorney General, that still stands. So that was the update from the Attorney General, which I think generally agreed with the consensus we had arrived at last week in the local government attorney community. So I just wanted to provide that update for you.
Thank you. We have some questions here. Ms. Volz, your light is on. Did you have a question?
Yes, well, yeah, I guess a question. I don't need my concealed carry permit anymore?
Yeah, the state did away with the requirement to have a concealed carry permit several years ago, so.
Good.
Yeah, I don't know if that one got very widely noticed, since you're the second council member.
No, I didn't know, yeah.
Said that they weren't aware of that. But yeah, that's been a few years now that that hasn't been a requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton.
So you said that you can't, what's our policy as far as City Hall goes and stuff like that? They're not?
We don't have a policy because we're not allowed to have a policy. Oh, okay. Sorry.
Okay, but they can bring it into the front office and all that? Interesting. How about, you said Florida's not appealing this. If California or one of those other three that didn't allow it, appeal it and win the appeal, how's that affect our law?
So we would be bound by any decision of the U.S. Supreme Court. So if the, if another state, yes, if another state brought the same issue to the U.S. Supreme Court and the U.S. Supreme Court said, no, this is, open carry isn't protected under Bruin, which is their decision a few years ago that the court relied on, then that could change, but for right now...
If that was the case, then Florida would actually have to change their law.
Yeah, and they might anyways. The governor might call a special session to clarify the state of the law in light of this decision. That would be a fairly normal thing to do.
Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. I have one or two questions. One is, at what point can we have a firearm, for example, in the parking lot in your vehicle on a government building like this, when we're at city council meeting? Where does it cross the line?
Yeah, there's no prohibition from having a firearm in your vehicle. You know, as you probably are aware, you have to have it locked, locked away in a glove box or the trunk, but certainly somebody could have a firearm in their vehicle, and this decision really doesn't impact that at all.
Okay.
But they couldn't bring it into the chambers.
Right. And then at a, say, a Christian school, I'm going to use Bethany maybe as an example, can you have a firearm in their parking lot, even since it's a school?
So there...
I know there's special, used to be special licensing that we had to have to carry it inside.
Yeah, the legislature made a law a few years ago. I'd have to refresh my memory exactly to the extent of it, but that basically, I think, protected people from being able to carry or to have a vehicle in their car as long as it's locked in the trunk and the glove box, even if it's on private property. So I don't think this changes that, but I'd have to look into specifically what that law did. It's been five or 10 years ago since they passed it.
I'm pretty sure, son, if it just applies totally on school property or just inside the building.
Well, so those are private schools, number one, so, but I'm pretty sure that you're allowed to have it as long as it's locked in the trunk, but I'll have to get back with you on that after I check.
Thank you. So are there any other comments? All right, then we... Yes, exactly. All right, so there are no other comments. We are returned.